Would you please join me in the place, Lee?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is probably one of the best times that we have when we're in the position of mayor is to administer oaths of office to members of our police department. We have two new people. Jake, if you could join me up here. And I'm going to ask you to go ahead and ask them to come forward and you say some things about them if you will.
Tonight, we're going to swear in two of our newest officers to the police department. And as Mayor Neely said, it's a great honor to do this. And I'm very excited to have both these officers join the department. And one thing we've been trying to do over the last couple of years is go out and hire lateral officers from other departments. And one of the reasons we do that is we just bring a level of experience to the department that we usually don't get with a recruit officer. And that's what we've done tonight. Riley Potter came over from Woodburn Police Department. And prior to that, he worked at Warm Springs Police Department. He graduated from Gladstone High School, I believe. And one nice thing about Riley is about two weeks ago, he got married in Hawaii. So he is not a new officer to us, but he has a new wife. And Stephanie's in the audience here tonight, so glad to have you here. And Dave Plummer has come over from Gladstone Police Department. He worked there since 1999. Dave went to Malala High School at Gladstone. He was a detective and a police officer and brings up a lot of experience here. And he lives in Oregon City with his wife Cindy and his daughter Brandon. So Dave Plummer and Riley Potter.
Thank you. After the swearing will be at how many officers?
Forty.
Forty, so. That's one more than we've had before. That's the highest number we've had. We've upped it to been thirty-nine, I think.
We've had forty before, but we lost a couple officers.
Great, thank you. Well, I'm going to ask you to repeat after me, with the exception of when I say state your name. Don't repeat that. I state your names. Ms. Amelie, swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution
and support the Constitution
of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
and department's rules and regulations
our department's rules and regulations.
while faithfully performing
while faithfully performing
my duties as police officer
my duties as police officer.
for Oregon City, Oregon.
for Oregon City, Oregon.
Thank you so much. Welcome to the city. Since I didn't state my name at the same time, I'm not a police officer. So in any case, go ahead, please take some pictures if you wish. And if some of you want to join them up here too, to have your pictures taken, they have to take them. Thank you so much. We, as members of the commission, also have to take similar oaths of office, although we don't have to worry about the code of police ethics. We swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon. Fortunately, there's never been a test that's been given to us to find out if we knew what the Constitution said. And I'm sure if we kind of didn't follow the Constitution, our city attorney would in fact warn us, I hope.
One would hope.
Anyway, we have here also a proclamation. This is a proclamation in one form or another that's read annually about this time of the year. It's the Oregon City-West Lynn Rivalry Day. Whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn wish to recognize the efforts of their citizens to create and maintain a positive family environment where children can learn the value of constructive competition. And whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn value tradition and history as essential parts of their communities. And whereas Oregon City High School and West Lynn High School, formerly known as Union High School, have competed valiantly in the sport of football continuously since 1921. And whereas on September 30th, 2011, the teams representing these schools will renew their rivalry for the ninety-first time. And whereas this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi and therefore worthy of recognition. And whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the pioneers again defeat the Lions and the City Council of West Lynn desires that the Lions again defeat the pioneers. Now therefore, we, the Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of West Lynn, hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual in this annual gridiron classic and supports the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming September 30th, 2011 to be Oregon City-West Lynn Rivalry Day. We therefore recommend, in the spirit of the day, that all citizens wear clothing of the appropriate colors and refrain from crossing the river unless business requires until gain time. Now, the mayor of West Lynn will also be signing this document. We have worked together to assure that we're going to reduce the opportunity of people coming together by closing the arch bridge.
Yeah, good, that's good. Did you ask about closing the other? That might be more complicated.
I think, you know, the alternatives that are given after that would be for people to use a Sellywood Bridge
or go to the Canby Ferry. Or swim.
I'm sure Sam Adams, Mayor Tom Adams' quarter would take exception since our voters here didn't vote to support the work on the Sellywood Bridge. And actually, the Canby Ferry can't carry a whole lot of cars or individuals. So now we better keep the 205 open, the Abernathy Bridge open. I got a question because Commissioner Smith, of course, teaches at Oregon City High School. And I noticed this, the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the pioneers again defeat the Lions. How long ago since again defeat the Lions?
It was a while ago, yeah. It's been eight straight losses, eight straight years since the pioneers have won.
So this is it, this is the year?
This is, I think this is the year. And, you know, actually, our past mayor pointed out that our team didn't win the entire time that she was in office.
So this is the year?
We have a new football coach, we have a new mayor. I think this is the year.
Very good. I'll take the credit if they do.
Now, are you going to bet the other mayor about, you know, maybe getting dropped off the bridge or something?
I...
Think about it.
Can I, can I, can I, can I have a wager as a city mayor to actually receive money from the other mayor? If it goes, wait a minute, if it goes to the city? Or a charity?
Sure.
To a charity, yeah.
So we ought to get really something out of this.
I think we better get something. Rocky, you better get that football team working, baby.
I wanted to mention, if in fact we don't win, we'll blame the coach.
I'm going to stay out of that.
Entering into here, we want to take any citizen comments that have nothing to do with what's on the agenda, restricting ourselves. We have some forms to fill in here if you haven't done so already. And when you're coming up, we request that you combine your statements to three minutes if you would, each. Come on up and we'll go ahead, state your name, but go ahead and fill that out. Ma'am, you can come up too if you wish and you can fill that out. Just make sure the city recorder gets it. When you introduce yourself, state your name. You can take the other seat if you want. State your name and whether or not you're a resident of Oregon City, okay?
And please, please hold out the microphone, hold the mic up to your...
Gives me time to fill this thing out.
Yeah, they're bent down, you need to push them up. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Ganea, and I requested this time today to make my final appeal before the mayor and city commissioners. It is my hope that you will consider a temporary true hardship exemption on the code enforcement for my carport under the new law effective on January 1st, 2011. I understand that all structures are prohibited under the new law, and that law did not have a grandfather clause. To provide a little personal history from my perspective, the membrane structure has been on my property for more than five years and has provided a sense of safety for my son and I since I am no longer with my significant other of seventeen years. My property is on the side of a steep slope which doesn't allow for a garage or other options for my car or even really a secure, dry place to keep my firewood, which is the only source of heat in my home during the winter. I have felt a sense of panic when I was faced with the tearing down of my parking structure, especially right before winter. Since my son and I live alone now, there are concerns for our safety with a number of car break-ins in the past. Additionally, I've been dealing with my mother's most recent battle with breast cancer and ongoing tests as well as a great deal of financial stress. It would fall completely outside of my budget to build even a small wood structure at this time. My father brings wood up for my son and I in multiple trips throughout the winter following his open-heart surgery. It would be even more of a hardship to have him go down steep stairs to another location, perhaps my porch, to stack wood. This would be my only alternative if the structure was taken down. Finally, there is also a concern regarding my property's location in a historic district. It is my hope that the Historic Review Board will also consider my request on a temporary basis. This would allow the process to also address compliance in historic districts. I believe that the process should address compliance of the law differently in historic districts since actions that involve any construction or changes to existing structures to occur could have that potential to cause an adverse effect to the historic district. I'm appealing to the mayor and city commissioners to consider a stay of my code enforcement for a period of time, possibly up to a year, which would allow the commissioners the time to determine a process for implementation of the new law. Personally, if this request was granted, it would allow me some time to financially consider some other options.
Okay. Particularly since our acting city manager is actually head of our community development, is our community development director in charge of planning. I suppose generally I go to him. What issues might exist to giving her a break in time?
I guess first off, we've worked with the property owner a little bit before. She came before the planning commission. And we worked with code enforcement. And we took the issue of the membrane structure code that was put into place that went into effect on January 1st, 2011. There are some other complicating issues on the property, being in a historic district, and some property line issues. If you'd like, I could bring this back at the next commission meeting with a write-up of the work that we've done to date. And we also did take this to the planning commission to discuss. And I can bring back what their discussion was and their direction to us at that time.
Is she currently being levied any fines or anything of that nature? Okay. We want to find out everything that's involved in the process. And did the planning commission actually vote on it or were they just informed of your decision?
It was more of an informal discussion and direction on if they would like to reconsider through the legislative process amending the membrane structure code. And there was not support to do that at that time. But at this time, we do appreciate that she has been working with us. At this point, we're just trying to work through the process to find any alternatives that exist. And we've exhausted most of the ones that we have. So once again, I can bring that back to you with more detail.
We're the appropriate body to deal with. We would like to get the background information on it. So you'll bring that back at the next meeting?
Yes.
That'll be the first Wednesday of next month, seven o'clock starting time.
Okay, thank you, mayor, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mark J. Matheson, and my wife and I have lived at 855 Malala Avenue for nineteen years. In 2002, the city of Oregon City implemented the first phase of Malala Avenue Reconstruction Project. As a public official, a project manager, and a civil engineer designer working for the government, before leaving to focus on disaster response, I was honored to be a civil servant. I coined a phrase which I adapted to a fifteenth-century philosopher. "I have title, therefore I am," because I saw the focus of the staff meetings turn from how we can help or limit the impact of growth to how much more money can we get from implementing a program or new process, which I believe is the motivation behind the code enforcement staff's erratic behavior, lack of consideration, and inability to resolve a conflict and the reason I am here. The objects of conflict are four cedar trees located on my property and not in the right way. They were damaged during the Malala Avenue Reconstruction Project. Subsequently, the trees died immediately after because of poor engineering practices and management by Sharon Zinnerman, who was a project manager, and Nancy Kershaw as a city engineer who refused to return phone calls then and still does. The city refused to take any responsibility for damaging the trees and put the responsibility squarely on the contractor. This is inappropriate, unprofessional, and ignores the legal precedents. And the reason why I'm asking the city council to make an official inquiry why the city staff uses their position to ignore the law and to intimidate the citizenry. And if that doesn't work, takes punitive actions rather than finding a resolution. The city has fined me over eighteen thousand dollars for not taking down trees rather than working with me to resolve a problem, a problem that they created. I don't think it's right, and I respectfully request a formal inquiry beginning with the city manager's office. The city manager escalated the problem when he accused me of a felonious behavior and then proceeded to hang up on me in mid-sentence. His behavior was unseemly, but was reflective in the Public Works Director and the code enforcement staff. My hope is that the formal inquiry will shed some light on the situation, resolve the conflict that changed an inert situation into a punitive action when I'm being charged the eighteen thousand dollars initiated by a narcissistic code enforcement personnel and reinforced by the executive level, a fact that your staff would never reveal without an inquiry. I yield the rest of my time for answering any questions.
You had called me and I suggested that you come here. I've informed the city manager that you might be coming. And also, code enforcement is now under the police department, so I've requested at one point that we might get a history of this. I don't know if this is a particular time, but I would prefer that our staff would have some time to address your complaint before us. And would also, of course, call upon our city attorney to deal with any of the legal issues that are before us. But I do think we need some history as to what has happened here.
And I have the history here, sir. I have some history here, but it's conflict since there has been no cooperation on the city's part.
So if the next meeting, I don't know if you're prepared to deal with this now, but...
I'm not prepared to deal with it now. It goes back way before code enforcement came under the police department.
Exactly, it was code enforcement.
And I'm familiar with a little bit about it. But in order to be fair to everybody here, I think I need a little bit more information. But I know the staff has prepared a history for that. I know the city manager has seen that. And I think we can probably get that history out to you in the next couple of days.
I think it would probably be better to. Our city manager is not here, as you can see. He's attending the city manager's thing. But since I assume, when you're referring to the city manager, I think within the time that you've talked about...
No, we're talking about today's city's manager.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we're not talking about, the other one was just as bad.
But in any case, I think since you're levying some accusations on the city manager, it'd be good if he were here too. So bring this issue back also at the...
Eighteen thousand dollars I'm being charged?
Well, it's all part of it.
That's all part of the discussion.
Trees are on private property.
I understand, I actually went by the property, I saw the trees. So I know where it is and I've seen the trees. But I think we need, they are definitely dead. And we need a...
They've been that way for, they died in 2003. So my other question is, how come it took this long?
We're going to have the history presented to us at our next commission meeting.
And I would like to have a copy of that sent to my email as soon as it's available.
All right.
Or I'll be asking for a request for information.
Is that all right with the commission? Okay. I guess both cases will be getting more information on it and the background behind it. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
See you at the next meeting. Going on into the agenda. Is there anything?
I'm sorry, Paul.
We've got more citizens, I'm sorry. I don't have them listed, but there he goes. Paula Edgar just popped up.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and City Commission. Briefly, I wanted to try to talk about an emergency preparedness forums that we are sponsoring. We, the city of Oregon City, the Oregon City School District, the Clackamas County Fire District. And this public forums are going to be, there's two of them. The first one is October 13th, and it sits between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. It's at Old Oregon City High School, which is on the Jackson, it's the Jackson Street campus. What's important, these emergency preparedness forums are about saving lives and understanding what our responsibilities really are and what we need to know to be, to help our families and help our neighbors. So the first one is going to be, going to talk a lot about the Department of Geology from the state of Oregon has done what we, a lot of people really don't understand, but it's called LiDAR mapping. And it's a new type of mapping. And what it shows is how landslide, the potential landslides, and just really where they are and how they could affect all of us and what we should know. And we're going to have people there from insurance companies, from the state. We're going to have people from Dagami. We're going to really talk it out. But that one, in the end, this is about protecting ourselves and our families and our investments. Each of these forums, we're going to have door prizes and be giving out significant emergency packs that people should have at their homes. And we're going to have people there explaining what people should have in their homes in a case of an emergency, of a significant emergency. The second one, which is going to be on November 10th, again at Old Oregon City High School, Jackson Campus, we're going to have everybody from, speakers from Portland State University, our planning department, just everyone that's going to be involved to try to get people aware of earthquakes. We are in a major overdue period where a major earthquake could just rock us and change all of our landscape. It could also affect all services. What should we be doing? What should we know? Again, we're going to be trying to educate. And this is, these forums are going to be probably one of the more important forums that we put on in Oregon City, and they're free. They're free to everyone. And this is a chance for us to help ourselves, help our families, help our neighbors, help our city, and to learn how to be in sync with catastrophic events should they ever happen to us.
I'm going to ask you to repeat the dates, the times, and the venue.
Okay, again, the date is, the first one is October 13th, Oregon City's old high school on Jackson Street. And it's between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. And the second one is on Thursday, these are two Thursdays, November 10th, between 7:00 and 9:00, again at the Old Oregon City High School, Jackson Campus. And we sure hope that everyone comes. We're going to have refreshments, door prizes, and a lot of education.
I'm sure I'll make the second one because the LiDAR imagery shows the Bolton vault going through the middle of the block, my block, right behind my property.
There you go.
Paul, I have a question. I spent the entire day on this today at Jackson Beach. Are you having what the National Guard calls the LNO? And they use so many acronyms, I have no idea what that is. But they're retired military people who are commissioned to certain counties and cities. So there is someone in charge of Oregon City through the National Guard who's a retired military person. Is that person going to be there?
I don't know, but maybe we should talk and try to make sure that they are. Because we need to make sure that we're coordinating everyone that we can.
We're having an earthquake October 27th, it's going to be a 7.7.
Be prepared, be ready.
Oh, this is, you have to, there's, James Roddy from Dagami is just wonderful. Dr. Burns is wonderful. So the people that are going to be there are not only knowledgeable, they have all of the facts, but what they really are going to be leading us to understand is that we have a probability, if you used a probability analysis, we're overdue. And we better understand this and better be prepared. And this is a chance for us to, for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the agenda, is there anything that anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda or any other issues? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to the public hearings on the Water Master Plan. It's continued from June 15th, 2011. And I assume that we're directing it to you.
Correct, thank you, evening commissioners. You did continue the request for the legislative file 10-02 for the update of the Water Master Plan. That was continued from the June 15th, 2011 city commission hearing to tonight. As it's a legislative action that needs to go before the planning commission, and they make a recommendation to the city commission for approval, denial or approval with conditions. We continue to work with our consultants, West Coast Engineering, on the master plan, specifically the financial implications associated with our charter and what the alternatives are there. So we are requesting at this time that you take any public testimony from anyone here who wishes to testify and then continue to the date certain of November 2nd, 2011.
We will go ahead and do that. Is there anybody here that wants to testify on the Water Master Plan? Which I don't know, since there's nothing before specifically, whether they'd be testifying before. But when it goes to the planning commission, is there going to be testimony there?
Yes, there will be.
Yeah. Okay. So is anybody here to speak on this particular item?
Karen Chuck.
Actually, I'm opening the public hearing, oh, stated, but. If anybody does, we step forward.
You want to talk about the water bill?
I guess we have now closed the public hearing. And do I hear a motion to continue?
So moved.
To November 2nd.
To November 2nd. Second, pronounced November 2nd.
I heard a motion was from Commissioner Mom and a second from Commissioner Smith, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Yay.
I believe our next item, well, I've got it right here anyway, is general business. A topic that we've discussed and took in action on at the just completed Urban Renewal Agency Commission meeting. And that's a conduit infrastructure for future fiber optic use, Main Street, His Street to 10th Street. And it's a request for a seventy-five, well, I'll let Tony Conkle address it.
Thank you, and I'll turn this over to Eric to make the presentation on this request tonight.
And Eric, would you introduce yourself again for this public? I appreciate it.
I'm Eric Wargren. I'm a project engineer at the Public Works Department. I'm filling in tonight for Nancy Kershaw, she's on vacation.
And you're responsible for Main Street, is that correct?
I'm responsible for Main Street.
The Main Street.
Wow. Okay, well, I got some complaints for you. Waying over Tinker Hill.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the staff request that the commission authorize seventy-five thousand dollars expenditure from the cable TV franchise fund for the installation of conduit infrastructure for future fiber optic or communication needs. optic or communication needs. We're gonna be, as part of the project, we're replacing sidewalks and street lighting, and we're running two trenches on either side of Main Street from 5th to 10th, and we feel that we have this opportunity to also install this additional conduit in the trench that we already have planned for the construction work. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before I take a question, I just would, just inform the audience that a request for $30,000 had been requested from the Urban Renewal Agency's funds, from their contingency fund of $30,000, and that was, that was actually passed by the Urban Renewal Commission, I believe unanimously.
Yes.
Difference here is this request is not coming from the contingency funds from our general fund, is that right?
David, could you come and explain that?
We'll have, yeah.
For our viewing audience.
Good evening again, commissioners. This is coming from the Cable TV Fund, which gets 40% of the Comcast franchise fee, and the other 60% goes to the general fund. And from that fund, we pay the Willamette Falls Cable TV, then we, the balance stays in there for telecommunications stuff, which this is.
And how much remains after, we've already made a budgetary commitment to Willamette Falls, I believe, for this fiscal year.
Right, that, after that, there's still 50, 90, 150,000, I believe.
So 150,000 in the fund.
So then, then you take the 75,000 out from that?
Correct.
Okay.
I think so, you say that about.
I think it'd be 35,000 or something. I think it'd be worth having our city attorney address, repeat his response to a question that was put by our Urban Renewal Commission Chair earlier in terms of whether, in fact, since we own the conduit, whether, in fact, we could apply fees that I guess would potentially ultimately cover the costs that we're putting forward here.
My answer then, and my answer now, is that you can affect existing franchises only to the extent that you've granted them and that you have the money coming in. So you can use those funds once they're yours. As far as raising more money from existing franchisees, you'd have to do that with a change in the franchise ordinance, which generally you don't allow until the franchises run out. With regard to future users, you can rent that space and use that money as part of the general fund, if you wish.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any questions on this request? I have nobody popping up. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to, if I can find the intended item, to approve the budget authorization of $75,000 for the conduit infrastructure of Main Street.
I just, I would just mention, the reason this is coming forward is we're essentially digging a trench in Main Street anyway, and rather than that being torn up at a future date, and also because fiber optics is a very important communication infrastructure, that it would make sense for us to get the conduit now so we don't have to have a future fiber optics, whoever it is, utility wishing to put it in and tearing up the street again. So, having said that, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good heavens, we're on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
I don't believe this. Anyway. I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll find something that could drag on me.
I have one question about the consent agenda, and that's to the police chief. There was three requests for alcohol applications, and the police are okay with that, right? I just wanna make sure.
You might, you might want to say what you go through when you're determining whether a franchise should be allocated, maybe that'd be beneficial.
Absolutely. We get a, an application from the proposed licensee, and we'll basically do a criminal history check on them, make sure there's nothing in their past that indicates that would not be a good, or not being acceptable, a person to have a liquor license, and that's pretty much a formality, and, but we do a pretty extensive background in conjunction with the LCC.
Good. Thank you.
Can, may I ask a question also? One of these looks like Safeway. What's this other lay international?
That's the Shell Station on Malala.
I'm just catching up with you here. Okay.
I will move to adopt a consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
In place of the city manager, do you have a report? Mr. Conkle?
Thank you. I think, I have a couple things tonight, I think we'll start with Chief Conrad, he had an announcement.
Sure. Tonight is the first night of the Second Annual Oregon, Oregon City Police Department Citizens Academy. And if you recall, last year, it was our, obviously our first one, and we had a group of about 20 citizens participate in several month process, maybe once a week and some Saturdays. And it's a way to expose citizens, to help police departments work on why we do the things we do. And we'll actually take them down, and we'll explain to them patrol tactics, we'll explain to them use of force situations, and it's just a good way to reach out to the citizens and make sure they have a little bit of an insight, a little bit of a peek behind the curtain in how we actually, how we actually do things, so.
That's amazing. I know somebody that attended that first one, and she was very happy.
She really liked it?
Very impressed, yeah.
Good, good. So Lieutenant Nunes has done a really good job of organizing that, and like I said, our first one starts tonight, and I think it runs for 10 or 12 consecutive Wednesdays, if I remember right, so.
Can I ask about 10 or 12 consecutive Wednesdays to complete the course, correct?
Yes.
So we can never do it?
No, that's why we have it on Wednesdays.
Okay. Point taken.
No, you know, we're not, we're not married to Wednesdays, and maybe next time we do it, we can do it a different night like that. If the commissioners would enjoy going through it, we can certainly change it around. But Wednesdays was, I think, just the night we picked, because it, you know, on some Tuesday nights, we have chief's advisory and some other meetings we have going on and stuff like that, but we can certainly make arrangements.
Maybe you could attend a couple and get like an honorary, like.
I wanna do the whole thing. I don't do anything halfway.
I know, yeah.
Only problem, I could only attend those that were on the 5th Wednesday. Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other items for?
We're continuing to work on Kanema Park, and we'd like to pass along that the volunteer playground construction will be happening this Saturday and Sunday, beginning at 8:00 AM up at Kanema Park. So anyone interested in coming out and volunteering some time to help put together the playground equipment and help with that project, feel free to show up at 8:00 AM on this Saturday or Sunday at Kanema Park, or give City Hall a call, and you can speak with Scott Archer or Denise Kai if you'd like some more information on that. I'd also like to pass along congratulations to Dean Herman. He's a utility maintenance specialist, three worker with the Water Division in our Public Works Department. He is retiring on September 30th after almost 23 years of service here in Oregon City. So we would like to thank him for his dedicated service to the city and our citizens, and wish him a very happy and healthy retirement.
His name for?
His retirement will be September 30th. And then the last thing that I have is the Heritage Programs Division of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department has created these playing cards to, which I'll pass out to the commissioners.
What are, what are the restrictions on gambling in the state?
Well, yeah, if we involve the chief, we're good, right?
Is there enough, if there's that for him?
So these cards illustrate the important Oregon heritage sites and activities, and how Oregonians can become stewards of these nonrenewable resources in our state. These cards show some of the most significant heritage sites throughout, throughout our state, as well as things that folks can do to preserve these, these resources. There were 20,000 of these card decks made, and they were contributed by the Association of Oregon Archaeologists, ICF Jones &amp; Stokes, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, National Park Service, the U.S. Bureau of Land Management, the Bureau of Reclamation, and the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office. Copies or decks of these cards can be attained at county historical societies, any of the contributing organizations, and some state parks.
Well, thank you very much. I think we'll now check these cards.
Is there any Oregon sitting out there?
Well, I was gonna suggest what we could do, there must be some Oregon City ones, and when we're playing with these, we can turn the card over, and if it's an Oregon City one, it counts as a wild card.
And we did pass whatever what?
I love it, Kathy. That's great.
Very good, well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight.
I'll just, I'll just mention one thing that happened, and this was just last night. Paula Edgar had sent out an email telling us that Brian Bond of Metro, who's responsible for the metro open spaces in much of Clackamas County, gave us a tour of the, of the Kanema site, particularly focusing, of course, on the metro purchase, and was extremely impressed by what has been done there in terms of the removing invasives, of particularly focusing on areas that are really the savanna area and the oak savanna area that was basically formed by Native Americans and their hunting practices, where they would burn certain areas for the purpose of attracting game into the area. I do know it wasn't part of the discussion, but this, this whole area along the Willamette River and through the Columbia River was, was heavily populated by whitetail deer that actually utilize these particular areas, and I think was probably a major game source. They're, they are now on the Threatened Species List within the Willamette, there are some, there are some on the Columbia River and a few in the Roseburg area. And these habitats are extremely rare. He mentioned particularly one of the species of loxpers is only located in this particular area. It is, it is an endangered species. They're creating the habitat in which it will bloom, and apparently during spring, in fact, I've seen it, if you go down there in the spring, I've seen it, but now under the conditions where they've removed a lot of the invasives and also opened up the oak savanna area by starting to remove some of the conifers that have moved into there, the loxpers are really blooming tremendously. There are also camas, which, which is a very important food source for the native peoples here. And I would suggest going, if you, if you don't go out beforehand, I would suggest going out there in the spring and April and May is really a glorious view. Things die back in the summer, and because it's, there are some perch wetlands there, but they dry out during the summer, but the spring is magnificent. This is Kanema? The metro purchase in Kanema, just beyond our Children's Park, adjacent to it, actually. So, anybody else have something to report?
C4 Retreat, we went to.
Yes.
I did have to go back to my pain job, but the Friday, so Commissioner, Mayor Neely, would you have any final?
I've got a, I got a couple of concerns, and things that really rose to the top. It was, we got together in groups and listed concerns in various areas, but the two concerns that rose to the top, it was transportation, transportation funding, of course, also the presumption that federal funding, the level of federal funding we've seen supporting many of the projects in this region, and many in Oregon City, in fact, will be harder to come by in the future, and how do we approach these? The second one was communication with, among each other, but also with constituents, and the importance of that communication. I would say this was the best, I think, I probably attended a total in my time here, maybe six C4 meetings, I should say, what did we call them?
Retreats.
Retreats. And C4 has changed quite a bit in terms of its operation. When it first started out, it really were the cities in the metro area.
Right.
It then expanded to include other cities, and now they've expanded it to include Hamlets, villages, and representatives from, from.
CPOs.
CPOs, that's County, County Planning Organizations, which are somewhat similar to our neighborhood associations. And, and we had a good representation from those groups, and I think the communications are very, very good. Commissioner Mum is our representative to C4, but their general operation procedures is to break out, on two, two of the meetings per quarter, break out into the incorporated cities and the unincorporated areas. And so you have separate breakout meetings, and then they come together once a quarter to discuss common interest. One of the things that came up was that unincorporated urban areas of Clackamas County have more in common with the incorporated cities than the rural areas do. And trying to address this at the C4 to make sure that some of the concerns in the urban areas are dealt with. What I found very interesting was, one of the major things that came up in terms of the concerns of the peoples from the Hamlets, not dissimilar to our lacking sidewalks in some areas of the cities, is the presence of ditches, and they've actually had several actions, a couple of them fatal involving bicyclists getting hit, and they had nowhere to go. I mean, they, they couldn't go off because they landed in the ditch and so forth, and they regard this as one of their major issues in those areas. So pedestrian, bike issues in the, in the rural areas are, are coming to the top in terms of their concerns, as they are in, within the cities.
Common thread.
Common thread.
That we have.
So.
More to come.
Did you bet your word for there for the first day? Is there anything you wanna mention from that?
I thought it was a great retreat. Lot of good ideas coming out, and I think there'll be a summary coming out, and that we can share with everybody else on the commission.
One of the, and it was just because of scheduling and things, one of the things that was a little bit disappointing was the county commissioners could not be there for the full time because they had some meetings conflicted on the first day. Most of the county commissioners were there for the second day.
Yeah, yeah.
And Commissioner Savis actually was the key commissioner that was there throughout, but it was a well, it was a well organized.
Well organized. It was great.
Any other reports?
I have an announcement.
Yes.
Just wanted to let people know that this Saturday, I believe, I think the chief would know this too, is the Health and Safety Fair at Danielson's Hilltop Mall.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of the school district and community schools are involved in that, police and fire, and so that's this Saturday, I don't know what the hours are, but.
Usually like nine.
It's usually like, yeah, until about.
Nine to two, usually.
Two, yeah, about then. And I guess that's the only thing other than that, I just, I went to the car show, or the cruise to downtown, which I think a lot of us did, and it was, it was another great event.
I think.
I ended up spending, I think, spent pretty much the entire day down there.
Yeah.
Was very, very well attended. I was surprised, actually, because of the weather was not so great, but.
Right.
It was a nice event, and so good job to all those that were involved in that. And don't forget, this Friday is not a home game, home football game. We've had one home football game, which we did really well last Friday night. I actually, I shouldn't say this, I said this today, I'll get in trouble for this. I didn't know, I kinda felt like I wasn't in an Oregon City game. Cause we were doing that good. And so this week is a, is a away game. Next Friday, week from this Friday, is the big game, and this, that's the one we already mentioned tonight, Oregon City West Lynn. It's here, Oregon City West Lynn, the 91st year, and it should be, it should be a big one.
Was there a kind of a pregame with West Lynn earlier this year?
I, not that I know of.
That was old people.
Well, that was an old people.
Oh, that was the, there was. Oh, that was the, there was the Battle for the Bridge, which was an alumni game that took place in August.
And I like to say that my son played in that game, right? My son played
For Oregon City?
That's right, and we won, so.
Woo! See, we're on a roll. Now, did you go to the game?
No, I was out of town.
Okay, well, I didn't go to the game either. I had something else that night, but I saw the program, and I, they did, it was a great fundraiser for cystic fibrosis, which was even one of the other reasons I really wanted to be there, because I had worked with Dornbacher Children's Hospital for many years, and worked with a lot of kids that had cystic fibrosis. But I saw the program for the game, and I was shocked by it, because it was a well-produced program. In the front, you know, cover had Oregon City, Westland, Hamlets, Battle for the Bridge in big letters. And I looked at it, and I said, that's the wrong bridge.
[laughing]
On the front cover of it, they put the Oregon City Gladstone Bridge.
Oh, my lord. Whoops.
This Tuesday is also the, yeah, next Tuesday is the Oregon City Westland Breakfast, which, you know, if you've lived in Oregon City all your life, you know how important this game is. So we talk it up a lot, and people don't really understand why, but it's such a huge part of this community and also Westland. So I always kind of educate my students a little bit about this. The first real, the first game took place, essentially, the first year that the Oregon City Westland Bridge opened. So there's a lot of connections with that, nineteen twenty-one, nineteen twenty-two. Ninety-one years, as I said, last year, of course, was a pretty big one, that's ninetieth. The one question that we've always talked about is, you know, this rivalry between the two cities. And there always has been a rivalry between the two cities, not just the schools. And I always kind of question, well, what started that? And a lot of my students ask that. Well, in doing some research for the tours that I do, and just history in Oregon City in general, there's a really great story about the founder of Lynn City, which was Robert Moore, and the founder, of course, of our city, John McLaughlin. And when Oregon City, of course, got started being developed, we had a lot more flat area on the lower part of the city to build a town. And of course, John McLaughlin had a fairly good head start on that. A town started being developed across the river called Lynn City. And so from that point on, there was this competition between the two cities, and especially between Robert Moore and John McLaughlin. And the story is that near the end of both of their lives, McLaughlin is in his house, essentially, on the Oregon City side, where the Blue Heron Mill is, and was basically reflecting on his life and the city that he built. And he could actually look out his window and see Robert Moore's house across Lynn City, where Robert Moore was kind of reflecting on his life, also in his house, towards the end of his life. And Robert Moore died September 2nd, eighteen fifty-seven. McLaughlin died the very next day. And so the amazing part of that story is kind of, I think, what recreated the rivalry, which was, of course, everyone in Oregon City saying that not only is Oregon City the most prominent city, but McLaughlin the most powerful leader, living that one extra day beyond Robert Moore. And the sad thing of is that that was eighteen fifty-seven, and just, you know, about two years later, the entire city of Lynn City was washed away in the flood of eighteen sixty. So just an amazing tradition between these two cities. The high school of both cities, and really essentially the cities and the communities themselves, always have a breakfast the Tuesday morning before the game together, and that takes place at the Oregon City Elks Lodge on Tuesday, next Tuesday morning. I don't know what time it is, six-thirty, but you can buy a ticket at six-thirty in the morning, so it's really early. And you can, I know you can buy breakfast there and attend that, and I think it's ten dollars, something like that. So come do that, come take part of that. If you've never done that before, and you live in Oregon City or Westland, you really should. It's a neat part of the tradition, so.
Good job.
Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
I didn't go to the car
I thought I could tell a long story, since we have so much time.
Oh, my god!
Well, I'm going to say I did not go to the car show, but since my granddaughter, since she's six years old, she, we've gone out, another grandchildren, too, to the Salt Beach Cleanups.
Oh, yeah.
And she's, this one is, one granddaughter, who is now nineteen, still wants to go out with me on these Salt Cleanups, and she even insists her boyfriend come, too.
Oh, there you go.
So that, when things happen on the Salt Beach Cleanups, she won't see me around, until in fact she finds a boyfriend that she'd rather spend more time with than me, but, which I think is going to be pretty soon. Anyway, any other comments for the good of the order?
Mayor appointments?
Oh, yes, thank you. Mayor Oreo appointments.
There's two items left for you, Mayor.
Yeah, I've got them. We've got, actually, our first four appointments to the Natural Resource Committee. I believe that we're now in receipt of three additional ones.
I think two.
Okay.
Two or three.
And Shaw Spady lied to me. Anyway.
Well, it's two or three.
Anyway. Richard Craven and Brian Boyce are, have terms going into September 21st. No, excuse me.
December 31st.
Well, yeah, appointments from September 21st to December 31st. Jerry Herman, from September 21st to December 31st of next, two thousand thirteen, the former were to two thousand fourteen. And Marlo Smith, starting on September 21st to December 31st, two thousand twelve. We've had to stagger terms, because we're reestablishing the committee. I requested that the term, the first term terminates at the end of next year. Wouldn't make any sense to bring somebody in now and to have their term end at the end of December this year. So they'll have an extra few months in their respective terms. We have two, we have two other applications in, and I believe we will have a third shortly, if we haven't received it already. With that, we're also going to, among you, I think, appoint a backup voting delegate for the 2011 League of Oregon Cities. Our commission president, James Nacida, will be there, but I think he thinks he may have to not attend.
There's a possibility. So a backup would be a good thing.
So I'm actually going to have the three of you make that determination of who you want, and I'll simply appoint that person. Well, that would be the easiest thing, yeah, because they should have it appointed, but.
Yeah.
Betty can do it.
All right.
Hearing no objections, I will appoint Betty, Commissioner Betty Mum, as the backup voting delegate.
You missed a meeting, you got appointed.
Should our commission president, James Nacida, not be able to be there for the full time.
All right.
Any other?
Yes.
Congratulations, Betty.
Thank you.
James, I have you down.
Go.
I just wanted to explain my wardrobe tonight. I'm wearing a shirt given to me by the Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Roth, and I all attended last Thursday, I believe, kind of reception and forum on the new charter school for students studying industrial technology. And it's a very interesting program. I recommend students check into it if you're interested.
Thank you.
So I should probably start over, maybe. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Roth and I attended a forum for the Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences on Thursday. It's a program for students studying industrial technology, and it, the principal, Ginger Redlinger, was very enthusiastic. The staff, the teachers, were very enthusiastic. This also has, schools benefited from our outreach to Concordia University. Professor Steve Braun and Bill Mead, who spoke here several months ago, were at that forum also, talking about a matriculation agreement with the charter school for students to advance from that school to Concordia's program in industrial technology. And it was very exciting. The school district is working very closely with Concordia to find some space for that fabrication laboratory, and it's flourishing. It's very exciting to see.
Mine was, kind of piggyback on that, I passed out a letter tonight, and you'll be receiving a hard copy of the letter, from Concordia University and Growth Design Corporation, discussing that they're ready to go ahead with vigorously pursuing their interest and development in Oregon City for possibly, in their first phase, three to four hundred, or two to three hundred family wage jobs. So this is something that's very exciting to me, and actually, what's most exciting is they don't want any urban renewal money. They have their own funding.
Oh, good.
And they've been granted by the government accreditation as a homeland security training college program, and they'll be the only one west of the Mississippi. So it was very exciting to get this letter and to get some of Jim and my work come to fruition. It looks like they're going to be ready to go.
Anything else for the good of the order? Is that all the city question?